All right, I'm going to call me in order. Roll call, Danny. Here. Kimberly. Here. Leah. Here. Jeff. Here. Rod. Here. And I'm also here. Meeting has been properly notified since certified use. Thank you. Please join me in the flag allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have the volunteers' petition statements?
The Montmoreverian School of Descent in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing, and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Jeff. Moving on to two, two A is approval of the agenda. Second. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Kimberly. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to two B, approval of the September 16, 2019, regular minutes.
So much.
Time. Motion by Leah, seconded by Danny. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to C, approval of the September 30, 2019, special workshop executive session minutes. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to three, three A is our student spotlight.
Good evening, board members. You know, it's most appropriate that we start our student spotlights of the year with a kindergarten student. Principal Johnson was literally skipping in her office a couple of days ago and she was telling me all about our recipient. Can you introduce us?
Yes, this is Raylan. No, maybe not. It's okay, but here's the thing, this is where it matters most, is Raylan is so kind to his peers. It's not often you see someone at his age just naturally do some amazing things for kids. So day two of school, I'm out in bus duty. Little kid gets off the bus and what was that kid doing?
I helped him walk the school to halfway. He went on my hands, showed me, and he walked through.
But he wasn't gone, so my friend Raylan, so he was, the little boy was crying when he got off the bus, missing mom. And so he was holding my hand as soon as he saw Raylan, Raylan saw him, Raylan said, "Do you want to hold my hand?" And they started walking down to kindergarten. He helped that child be brave. And then that happened for a few days, didn't it? Like that boy was looking for Raylan when he got off the bus. Couple other instances. So Mrs. Schoff, as you know, 20 kindergartners and none of them knowing how to open a milk. Except for Raylan. Honestly, just chipped right in. And she said, days later, all of a sudden she looked around and he was just helping himself, making sure everybody had their milks opened for snack time.
And lunch.
Without even being asked. Just being a huge helper to others.
Because you're off and I'll go with your milk.
I know, and they were so appreciative, they were so thankful for you, weren't they? Mrs. Ryan, our guidance counselor, has been in the room, and here's what she had to say. She said, "Well, when he sees a student maybe not playing with somebody, maybe playing on their own, he actually goes up and invites them, initiates, 'Hey, you want to come play with me?'" She's also seen him share and take turns during play and use kind, encouraging words with classmates. For example, she heard him say, "Thanks for helping me, it looks awesome." So again, just really a positive, kind liking and already at this young age showing greatness that we all wish we had. So, um, thank you, Raylan.
Congratulations. There are some special people that are with you tonight. Where are these these people?
Mom and Dad.
Mom and Dad are here because they love you.
I had very good ones with my grandma and I thought, "When I get to go down my way..."
Wonderful, wonderful. That's how much they're so proud of you and they love you. So we have this certificate here for you that we hope that you'll keep in a very special place in your home, maybe your bedroom or someplace that you can show to others. Can we give this to you and would you be willing to take a picture with all of us? Oh, how wonderful, wonderful. Could we even have mom and dad join us in that picture? Fantastic. Board member who's got, would you mind joining us as long as president? Come over here, would that be okay? Come on over. And lunch.
I was going to stand next to you here.
Good place to feel so proud of us.
They're going to go first. You want to come over here? And maybe one of these two.
That's fantastic. Congratulations, Raylan.
Thank you so much for bringing me to this. Thank you.
Take care of yourself. Thanks, my real, thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to your three A, school news.
Actually, eveninging in, board members. Boy, are we lucky to have a new state representative for our board. This fantastic meeting here, we're talking about Ally's under. Ally is a familiar face to many of you, as you may remember, she was an integral part of our school resource office, which is for our community. But that would not be only the contribution she makes to our school district. She's also been a leader in initiating something called Serve to Unite with our school district. This is some conversations, courageous conversations, we've been having about race and equality and the like, inviting a number of speakers, and then of course she gets involved in a number of other activities throughout the district as well. How fortunate we are for your leadership. Before I share a little school news, might I be able to turn it over to you and see if there's things around your plate?
Um, I was actually curious what specifically you were expecting for this. I don't think I've been around when someone's given school news, or at least if I have, I wasn't paying enough attention.
No, that's just fine. How did homecoming go? Maybe we could talk about some of the events there.
The dance went well, it was extremely profitable for student council, we reused a lot of old decorations. And so I know up until the last day of selling tickets, we had made over $2,000 on the dates. And then in that last day, we just about doubled that in ticket sales. We sold a lot at the door, so that was exciting. Good turnout, really good turnout.
And could you share with the board some of the names that you've provided to our senior leadership team for some potential additional students?
Yeah, so I'm going to butcher the names of the committees because I don't quite remember.
That's okay.
Safety and wellness, a lot of you guys have met my sister, she's also part of the student health and wellness coalition and with that at school. I know Ms. Corfren is working with her and a couple of other students on that right now, so that was a natural thing. She indicated her interest. As far as finance, which I don't know what the name is, is that it?
Finance?
It's finance, awesome. And as Jill, I've worked with really closely through DECA and the music program, and she's our treasurer for student council. So economics is something that she's already taken an interest in. And as far as what just met before this.
Education committee.
Education committee. Kree Faber was talking about that, and he has a lot of interest in curriculum. That's the one thing when I come back from board meetings and I'm talking to him about it, he's really interested in how that kind of comes together and definitely has a lot of opinions as far as curriculum laws. So yeah, those are the people that volunteered for us.
I find good people travel in packs, and when you mention some of these names, there are definitely some great leaders. And thank you so much for accepting the call to serve. Ally, apply using our Board of Education policy, which calls on juniors or seniors who are in student council. And thank you for your willingness to give up your time, as I know you're involved in many activities. I wanted to also just mention how proud I am of our girls gymnastics team. You may have learned that the halftime of Friday night's ballgame, our gymnastics team was recognized for sportsmanship award from the WIAA. And this is quite an honor, as you imagine how many gymnastics squads there are throughout the entire state of Wisconsin. It was just really a beautiful moment. If you get a chance to see some of our social media sites, you'll see some fantastic pictures of them. And then I wanted to also just provide a little update, if you don't mind, with regard to, and I know the board is well aware of this, you've done some work with the Drifflis Area Community School. We know that they have expressed interest here now over the past couple of days to hold some listing sessions or some meetings for some families. And I wanted to just be clear to those in the listening audience and watching on TV and perhaps maybe other board members update. The board was very thoughtful in taking time to listen to the proposal that was made from the Drifflis Area Conservancy School. And there were a number of suggestions made for how to leverage some federal dollars that are being offered through President Trump and the Education, Department of Education. And I think you've offered some suggestions about what we might do in order to ask them to reconsider some parts of their proposal. And there is some misinformation, we think, that's being propagated out in the community. And I'd like just to clarify a couple of things. First of all, this would be a charter school, and a charter school would be, at this point, independent of the school district. I think there's some information on either a website or two that indicates that this would be held at our intermediate center. And in fact, no such decision has been made. And lastly, I think there's some question out there from community members about use of referendum dollars to pay for this charter school. And that is not accurate either. So we encourage people to continue to trust and verify information as it comes open. Please know, any one of us would be happy to speak to where we're at right now in that journey with our community. Very loving and dedicated parents who want to do good and right by our kids, and we continue to want to work with them. So if you have any questions, anyone in the community or for that matter, board members, don't be afraid to give us that a shout, okay? Thank you.
Do you have other school names?
Yes, the PTO, the Ball Foot Loosers Friday Night, and the IC at 6:30. Very fun, $2 for families.
Work, work, work together.
Yeah.
The marching bands' last hurrah for this season was last Friday night, and it was awesome. I mean, they did a great job, the best, the best they did. Ally, you're, you play, don't you?
No.
No, you don't? Okay, fair enough. But just a great job, and they did a great job all season, but Friday night was particularly good.
Can I share, if you have a chance, that over at the Early Learning Center to check out the finished sensory path that Tru2041 created for our kindergarteners? They actually just sent us today the links to iMovies, where they are actually demonstrating how to do each of the sensory path opportunities for the kids. It's beautiful. And I'll send out some pictures, I just got them today from a drone, that shows each of the girls even sitting by each of their creations. Pretty great stuff. So if you've got a chance to step over and check it out and have your kids try it out, or even grownups too, it's fun.
Thanks, Raylan. Other school news? Okay, we'll move on to three C, citizens' comments.
Not here.
Citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to four, personal transactions. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Is that the addendum?
The addendum, is that person the one that drives bus for the district also? No. He isn't? No.
Okay, the motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod, to approve the original content and the addendum. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to five, consent agenda, is there anything anybody would like to pull up?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to six, discussion items, our first item would be the summer school report.
Yes, thank you, and you may remember, board members, when we initially talked about wanting to expand the summer school just because of the longer summer school, excuse me, longer summer than summer. We wanted to expand to include not only academic but also enrichment opportunities for kids. We recognize there may be some dollars associated with that. And we needed some time in order to gather the information that was necessary to provide that report. And I'm thankful that we have here our Associate Superintendent of Business and Finance, Mr. Scott DeYoung, and Director of Construction, Straka. Please come to the microphone and share the updates.
Well, welcome. It's perfect timing that we're talking about this because October's a big month, of course, in our finance world. Revenue limits, we'll find out mid-October how much aid we'll be receiving from the state. It'll help us develop our tax cookie at the end of the month. So when we look back to early in the calendar year, when we were talking about expanding summer school and providing enrichment opportunities, the one thing that we found ourselves doing is making projections, of course, right? Not only because we were talking about the upcoming summer, but also because we didn't know what the state budget would look like and what the impact we're going to run there was. Well, because the budget was adopted early in the summer, and now that summer school is done, we're able to look back and reflect on what the impact really is. So I'm going to talk strictly from a financial point of view, and then I'll let Sarah address some pieces from the academic side. On the financial side, we were able to increase our FTE on the revenue limit from three to nine, which doesn't sound like much because we had a lot more than nine kids actually attend summer school. Summer school is calculated based on the number of minutes that each child attends. And then over the course of summer school, we add up those hundreds of thousands of minutes, and then we determine FTE that we can put on our revenue limit. So the net effect on the revenue limit is about five FTE. And if you keep that over a three-year span, remember revenue limits, and enrollment is a three-year average. So if we were to take an increase of five and spread that out over three years, we're talking well over $50,000 of additional revenue over a three-year period. So from, again, putting my blinders on and strictly talking finance, it certainly has a significant benefit for us in terms of what it means for revenue. And certainly it gives us more flexibility with things we can do in the future when there's more funding available. Questions on that? Okay, and certainly if you think of something during the discussion, by all means ask. From a financial point of view, like I said, it's a very positive direction for us.
And when we looked at the revenue side and other side, we wanted to consider student attendance. And that's a piece that we wonder, summer, how's that student attendance look? So on average, for those 20 days of summer school, we average about maybe 80% attendance for a kid. So there may be some kids that have to take a day to do their vacations or practices, things like that. So to help the revenue side of the house, we're looking at where we cap our classes and maybe cap one a little higher to then compensate for when students aren't there, so we can stay closer to our 18, 19, 20 kids being present in the seats during summer school as well. So that is another new lesson learned, we've had many lessons on throughout our journey. Yes, we have McCormick shared his presentation with the education committee. In sharing lessons learned there, we're always learning lessons that we can perform as a program better and that we make even more, this is what Scott shared as well. So we're thinking about now that we have the grand scheme of cost financially, parent feedback, staff feedback, how we're going to move forward with the summer of 2020. Looking at internal talks as to when it's going to be, or how do you treat Monday's day, asking when we're going to have summer school, the dates, if you can plan. So never too early to start planning that process, and then also how can we improve our registration process. It's more a piece that we'll reach out to other districts to learn more about it, and probably can take campus better or some other system as well.
Questions?
So we're planning on keeping summer school. I assume it did well?
We are exhausted here.
I mean, because it was like, like I put on my calendar, review summer school with kids, and like that afternoon it was, "Summer school is full." I'm like, "Take that off the calendar," and then I got scolded by a seven-year-old. So are we planning on trying to expand some of the offerings and things like that to accommodate more kids? Do you think we could have gotten more kids had we had spaces? Because I mean, it was school in four days. Are you four days from your birthday in Illinois, it was cool.
Yeah, so we're trying to open it up to staff within and outside our school district right away to see if we have on-term subs or other people, maybe they work in our school districts or live here that want to teach at the summer school course, open that up right away to get more selection. We've only obviously seen some of the staff we have. So I think staff was sort of feeling how this is going to work, is worth my time, and I think it was a success it seemed like from staff, based on our feedback. I think every staff member was coming back, they said, or would consider coming back, they were 100% from staff. So we know that those people, so we want to add to that then and have staff see the value for the kids as well, as well for themselves, because they're summer too. So we do want to start planning early, and that's sort of the pieces to make sure that the board is okay with us moving forward because we are already learning like, running our lessons and wanting to make it better.
What we'd like to do is we'd like to be able to regroup and start making a plan, share with education committee and find its way, hopefully eventually to the full board for consideration. To Scott's point, every year that we continue from a financial standpoint, we're going to be in a better position. So I'm confident that we can get to a yes on this.
Have we thought about, or have we already done, like surveyed families about what types of classes they would like to see?
An initial survey that went out probably last October, November, December. Okay. We knew some, we got there in the post-summer school survey. I don't believe we asked for a specific piece of, we asked for satisfaction in the classes, but we didn't ask for those classes. Thought we did, I just couldn't see them.
I think there's been a bit of discussion in education committee as well about offerings and additional classes and the hope for expansion.
Well, one thing I just wanted to add is thank you for putting the investment in, starting this, because of course it's a three-year average for revenue limit purposes, and so the investment that we made this summer, of course, went a long ways. And certainly we'll recover the benefits, as Steve said, over the next few years.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate your input.
Okay, moving on to six, policy and resolutions committee update with our treasurer. Hearing none?
All right, well, if you have other wanted, what happens when the school districts take the time to write those proposals, resolutions to WOSB and send them off, I have the answer. And the answer is that they go into the spine policy and resolutions committee. So if we start off on our first slide. So starting from the state convention that happens in January onward, all of the resolutions that were received are collected by WOSB and put into a booklet that we can start working on in September. And I started that booklet with Dan, and she's going to pass that around. So what happens, through our workflow, we have a series of meetings, and I'd kind of outline our workflow on those if you can read screen. And it concludes in January at that meeting that we have in Milwaukee every year. And Mrs. Lipska is our appointed state delegate, I believe.
I think Diana is the chair, and she gets the clock pushing the buttons.
So Diana has to push the buttons, like what the committee has done in those previous meetings, to either say yes, I like your recommendations on these proposals, or no. And then we are going to either have them become WOSB official positions or not. And I say yes or no because sometimes the delegates then disagree with what the committee has done, so that you are also able to, two-thirds vote, two-thirds up in the back. So eventually the goal is to make one of these fine resolution notebooks that we all receive as members of the WOSB. So if we head on to our next slide, we will see how the committee make them. So they went for a really good mix across all regions, and they also looked at our special urban and rural district makeup too to make sure that we had good representation. I am the Region 12 rep for the next two years, that is an appointment. And we're also so fortunate on this committee that we have some really solid leadership to guide us as well. The head did select three former WOSB presidents to sit with us, as well as current president Hyde, so that some of those discussions are coming from seasoned people and all new people on the committee, because at any time, about half of the committee members are new, the two-year appointment cycle. And moving along, here's a full dense list of all of those proposals that the school needs for exams. And I did take the liberty of creating some categories for them, so it's a little bit easier to digest. But far and away, the most time and energy this session is being spent in that lower right-hand corner of the social justice. And I'll say that not everything on that list is really what it appears to be. If I can give an example of that, school district report cards is not really so much about the corporateness of measuring student data and should we be ranking them at all, but we're talking in that proposal about should students who are serving in juvenile detention centers also have their data incorporated into these report cards, or if that's simply not ethical. Real shaming though is one of those, isn't exactly what it sounds like, and that proposal is working to eliminate the identification of people who have their real accounts and arrears right now, and that includes serving in an alternate launch that other students could then identify them through. And I would say that the topic receiving the most energy from our committee, and we've also received lots of emails about this, even while the meetings are going on, is the Native American mascots component. And that is calling for a statewide mandate to hire all Native American mascots in public schools. So this would join the state of Maine, who this spring became the first state to ban all Native American mascot usage in public schools. Right now we have about 31 districts that are using Native American mascots, either at the district level or at individual schools. And beyond just the ethics of this and considering the right and wrong of this, there's some really significant pieces that also have to be weighed in. The first is that if we accept the state mandate, then it really have local control. And that's sort of a side of these for all school boards, because they really like to serve the communities of their community. So if we have to accept a state mandate, then we could give up that right. The second, then it would undoubtedly be an unfunded state mandate. So if we consider this example for use of, let's say, our Ford Vikings logo. So we have that in, you know, in five, into our gym floors, our cafeteria floors, there's metal signage throughout the district, there's brands, there's uniforms. So a mandate like that, if they said no Vikings, then that's no Vikings. So it's not just removal, but then replacement. So if we're talking no financial incentive, no state aid package, you can imagine some of these smaller schools that are still the chiefs and the warders, it's still not happening. And if it doesn't have to be compensated, that'd be a slow process. So those are real considerations that the committee continues to debate, and I think it's going to be pretty likely in January as well with that piece. Moving on to the next slide, and by the way, if you have any questions about specific proposals up there, that booklet has the language for each of them, so you're only welcome to borrow that too, and anyone else as well. So as we really work through these resolutions, there really is a good formal structure involved to guide us. So we imagined a couple weeks ago, and we had a full reading of all the proposals, and there were trans present as well. A lot of these proposals do hinge on these statutes that are already in place. So it's important to consider that before you ask for something further. We have some very lively, small group and large group debates before we vote as well. You can see the considerations that we work on there. Is this timely, is it worthy of a committee debate, and is it worthy of a full WOSB debate? Some of the topics simply are not, because they really hinge on one district's actions or one district's wants. And then of course we have three choices, we can advance it, we can advance it with modifications, or we can reject the proposal entirely. And as I stated before, when it reaches that state education committee, the committee assembly that they are working on, even if we reject the proposal, they could go ahead and use their two-thirds votes right back. So that might not be the case. So that might not be the end of the work. I'd like to say that we have a strong saying, and we don't have a fine saying that might mean. So that's where I am now for the meeting again before our November convention at the Stevens Point. And if you have any questions on where this is headed.
What happens when it's brought back with the two-thirds vote? And where does it, does it go back to the committee, or does it, then what happens?
So then you guys have to work through that. Imagine a chair there, and then, then the thresholds. And then again, if those are all accepted, they do become part of WASP's official positions that we all are asked to advocate for. And that's important, too, because we have our considerations of WASP, yes, to consider, but also it's the feasibility of taking this to the state level, right? One of those proposals asks that we add a one cent sales tax. I don't know any politicians that are going to be jumping at that one and saying, "Yes, please, we'll work on that." So we have to kind of keep beyond that January conversion line as well.
Well, and that's one thing that a lot of people at the delegate's assembly don't understand is what we're, what these are is asking WASP and school boards to, you know, be on board with these things. And they'll get very hung up on, "Well, it should be, it's a must, not a may, or a should, or a shall." And I'm like, when it gets into law, they'll figure out what those are. But ultimately, we want, you know, X. That's what, and we as school boards want WASP to promote X or to not promote Y. And so it gets really interesting, especially when they do come back with the two-thirds vote and bring something to the table.
Have you seen that happen a lot?
No. Usually fails. I think once. It was last year. They came back. Can't remember what it was for though. But then it failed anyway. So. Two-thirds vote, brought it back to discuss it, and then it still fell. Interesting.
No, I just wanted to thank you for all your work.
Mm-hmm. Go to bed. This is really fulfilling, and it's excellent, and it's like this.
If you might just take a quick time, Kimberly was sought out to be a part of this committee. Tom Luton, Sun Prairie Area School District Vice President of the Board, also a member of the delegate committee, reached out personally because he knows of Kimberly's outstanding work, and we're grateful for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kimberly. Okay, moving on to 7, action items. We will look to consideration of Costa Rica trip in June of 2020.
Welcome, Mr. Austin. How are you tonight?
Thank you, very well.
Good. And I see we're planning for a nice trip to Costa Rica, and we've attached to the board docs all the information you've received from families. 22 families have committed, thereabouts?
21, travels at this point.
Very good. Was there anything you'd like to share at all, in addition to what we've shared with the board already?
We'll be going in June of next year, the week following school getting out. Yeah, I think that's it.
It was a great parent night a couple of Tuesday nights ago, and thank you for just testing the waters to see if there was interest before we brought it to the board. And we're asking for your thoughtful consideration. Usually this happens around spring break, but we thought maybe we could leverage some longer time periods and...
Well, actually, there has been a middle school trip to a Spanish-speaking country for several years. So, but the high school trips do go every other year during the spring break. And coming back from that trip in March of this year, I thought, well, we could do this at middle school, too. But as you said, we thought we would test the waters and see if there was enough family interest, and there has been. So now we're looking for board approval. Motion to approve.
Why isn't here? I'm sorry. Jeff, can I speak up a little bit? Okay, thanks. Motion by Rod, seconded by Jeff. Further discussion? I have a question.
Yes.
Those rapids look pretty intense. Is that...
I'm not sure. They just crypt a picture of whitewater rafting in general. I'm not sure that's where we will be.
Probably a little more on the float side of the ship.
Well, I'll put you a few rapids there, but I don't think anything like that.
And then, is it open to all students, or...?
Seventh and eighth grade students, all seventh and eighth grade students.
Okay.
Including, I think, maybe one or two students who take French, have signed up to take this trip. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jeff. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Have a great time. Come back, tell us about it, and bring pictures, and...
Thank you, we will.
That'd be great.
Especially about the whitewater.
Yeah, we really would. Some GoPro video or something. Okay, moving on to 7B, consideration of snow removal quotes.
Board members, as we do from time to time, we'd like to connect with our vendors. Various topics this time is about snow. And we're asking for the board's consideration of selecting maple leaf for our snow removal needs during the next couple of years. They are the lowest bid, and we have great faith in the ability to carry out what we requested.
Second.